Ladies and gentlemen, once again, this is the continuation of the Committee on Housing and Buildings jointly with Fire and Safe Fire Safety. Madam Chair, you may continue.
Thank you so much. Am I good? Thank you so much for your perseverance. So we're going to continue with public testimony. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Sanchez and committee staff. I am grateful for the opportunity to present my testimony on Intro 88, which focuses on introducing qualifications for individuals responsible for conducting periodic inspections, testing, maintenance of fire and smoke dampers and smoke control system. My name is Anthony Guerin, a proud member of Local 28 sheet metal workers for 30 years. I'm here to emphasize the significance of fire life safety. This crucial aspect of building safety extends beyond mere sprinklers and fire alarms. It encompasses systems such as fire and smoke dampers that grant crucial time for fires to enter a building and for people to evacuate safely. Research indicates that more fire-related deaths result from smoke inhalation, underscoring the vital role of well-designed and well-maintained smoke control systems in safeguarding lives. Statistics reveal a troubling trend where a significant portion of fire and smoke dampers are not functioning properly, jeopardizing public safety and exposing individuals to potential danger. With an alarming 1.3 million fires causing scores of death and injuries annually, the imperative of routinely testing and inspecting fire life safety dancers cannot be overstated. Over the past 15 years, we have invested in training our workforce on fire life safety, specifically emphasizing the proper maintenance and inspection of fire and smoke dampers. This training forms an integral part of our curriculum, commencing from the fifth term and extending through the ninth term. The success of this program is evident as some participants return to further enhance their knowledge and skills in this critical domain. Our certified technicians not only both internationally recognized qualifications accredited under ISO, IEC 17024, but are also proficient sheet metal workers. This unique blend of certifications and skills equips us to fabricate, install, and repair damages with finesse and accuracy. By enacting regulations that emphasize the importance of qualified individuals overseeing these systems, we can significantly reduce the risk of fire-related incidents and protect countless lives who reside in our communities. It is necessary that we work together to uphold these standards and create a secure environment where residents can feel protected and at ease in their homes. Let us join hands in making fire safety a top priority for the well-being of all our residents in our city. Thank you for attention and consideration.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of Smart Local 28 in support of Intro number 88. My name is John Jackson. I'm the Director of Training. I'm tasked with the development of the training of Smart Local 28 apprenticeship and membership. We have been serving New York City and Long Island for over 100 years. We are a very unique trade. Okay, we are the only trade that designs these systems. We fabricate these systems. We install these systems. We balance them, and we also can inspect them. We can proudly say we are the last true American trade out there. We are here to discuss the fire-smoke dampers in our HVAC systems. When one speaks of fire prevention, they go right to sprinklers, fire extinguishers, and egress. They never really think of HVA systems. The HVAC system is not only used for climate control and air purification to prevent Legionnaires' disease or any other diseases in the building. It runs through the entire building, from the basement to the roof. It is strategically filled with fire-smoke dampers to control the spread of smoke and fire from floor to floor and even room to room, depending on the design. When inspected regularly, this can ensure the safety of evacuation that aids the firefighters in their effort to contain loss of life and damage. Inspected regularly by certified technicians would ensure that the building is a safe building for the people of New York. I think you get you, I'm sorry. Recently, we actually did do a training with the FDNY inspection team. It was a free training in our facility. We have in our facility a actual mock-up for a fire-smoke damper inspection. It's a live trainer. I'd like to take this opportunity to invite anybody who's interested here on the panel to take time out of their day if they would like to and visit the school. We would gladly go through and show you the validity of the inspection and the technician and the training that we do with our members. With that, I'll thank you respectfully, John Jackson, Local 28.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. Chair Sanchez, thank you so much for your poignant and very comprehensive testimony to get this ball rolling. It was very well thought out. My name is Jimmy Callahan, IA number 889076. I'm a 32-year member of Local 28 sheet metal workers, which means I've been around. We've done retrofits in the old buildings that Chief Woods was speaking about, and we do new stuff, obviously, but the older stuff is the big problem. We've been in the buildings where we retrofit, and you'd be surprised to see wooden chocks holding these dampers open, baling wire holding the dampers open, never to work. Massive problem. You hear the terms NEME, ISO, IEC, and NFPA. These are all the agencies that really put the rubber to the road to make sure that our people are skilled. You put the right people in the right positions to save lives. I heard the fire department, unfortunately, talk about the cost. That should not be an event horizon in this specific realm. This is about lives. Cost is something totally separate. Has to be addressed, but that's not where we're going. When you think about the amount of buildings we have in the city, thousands and thousands of buildings, which translates to hundreds of thousands of dampers, which translates to catastrophic problems could happen at any time, which they have been stating, we need to get in there, and we need to start doing this immediately. Our local supports 2,300 active journey persons and at any given time, 400 to 500 apprentices, all certified under the ICB, ISO, and the IEC standards to be these damper technicians. It is my belief, it's our belief, you know, I don't want to rehash what the gentleman just said, that this is the most important legislation we can think of moving forward because it specifically deals with the inhabitants of the buildings, the lives of those people, and our first responders that have to get in there and get out if they have to, right? I think that's pretty much it. I mean, I could go on and on, but I think I'll end it there. Can we hand it over to Marvin?
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Let me see if I can do better than him now. Good afternoon. Buenas tardes. Chair Sanchez, Chair Areola, and esteemed members of the Committees on Housing and Buildings, Fire, and Emergency Management. I appreciate the opportunity to present my testimony on Intro 88. My name is Marvin Tavarez. I'm a Local 28 business representative overseeing the Upper East Side and Upper West Side of Manhattan. Today, I advocate for the passage of this crucial bill, emphasizing its potential to save numerous lives in the event of a fire. Our city has witnessed tragic incidents claiming many lives. Fire life safety, specifically the absence of stairwell pressurization systems, smoke purge systems, and fire-smoke dampers have been identified as a critical factor in these incidents. In my role, I encounter numerous buildings lacking inspection and maintenance of these essential safety systems, with some even lacking them altogether. Given the information shared today and the importance of these systems in saving lives, it raises the question of whether any of you will feel secure in buildings lacking these crucial safety measures. Our union, Local 28, takes pride in training our members rigorously on fire life safety through top-notch instructors and state-of-the-art facilities. Let us prioritize the maintenance and implementation of these systems across New York City, ensuring they play a vital role in preserving lives when the need arises. I want to thank you all for your attention on this critical matter. Muchas gracias, and I hope we can work together to make this happen. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Gracias.
Thank you. I'll now call up the next panel. Sabrina Liriano, Brian Smith, Casimir Caesar, Phil Montori. Please come up to the table.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sabrina Liriano. I'm a 30-year apprentice at Local 28. As a resident of the Bronx, I did hear the stories and the testimonies. I was witness to that fire, and it was horrible. At that same time, we're learning about fire-smoke dampers, and I'm thinking if, in any way, are they even in those buildings? Those buildings don't have fire escapes. They don't have anything. So it's like, once you start learning about the internal part of the business and what it does to the people that actually reside in those areas, it's very impacting. So for Intro 88 to come into effect, it would be great for not only us that are working on the outside, and you know, it is providing jobs and everything for everyone, it is something that is to take in factor because it is a safety measurement for people and, you know, for survival out here. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sabrina.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair Sanchez and members of the Committees on House, Building, and Fire Emergency Management. My name is Brian Smith. I live in Jamaica, Queens. I'm a fourth year apprentice in Local 28 Sheet Metal Union. I joined the union for the benefits of my previous job that could not offer me. I have been blessed by the many different career opportunities my union offers. I'm here in support of the Intro 88 bill. Fire life safety is one of the first and cheapest defenses of saving lives. As a biological service technician in my previous job, I have seen firsthand the damage and distress of faulty fire prevention equipment. I support the Intro 88 bill to make sure my friends, family, and loved ones can safely walk into a building knowing that Local 28 properly installed and inspected all fire life safety measurements, in addition to countless jobs it will create for my local. I hope that you can support the Intro 88 the way my union does. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My fellow brothers and sisters of the local, my name is Casimir Caesar, and I am from Queens, New York, and I do represent our Local 28 Sheet Metal Union pertaining to Intro 88. And I'm also currently in my fourth year of the sheet metal apprenticeship. And over these years, I've grown to understand and appreciate the importance of my trade, especially coming from a dead-end job where, you know, I'm fighting for survival, trying to pay my bills. I viewed work more as a chore than anything else. But now I know for a fact that since we have almost 8.5 million people fighting for their lives in New York City, that this is something that is crucial to the betterment of our society. And that's what we want for everybody. We want prosperity. We want life. We want safety. And with as many people as there are in New York City, we know how congested that these buildings can get, and one sudden fire can kill an entire family and then some. So we see that example as at Twin Park. That's a terrible situation that occurred. And if we take more care in how we examine fire and life safety, that means checking that our dampers work, making sure that they're installed correctly, this can be a life-saving work for our local union. And myself, along with my brothers and sisters of the local, take extreme pride in what we do, and it will be an honor to add this scope of work to our resume. And I know that we can get it done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Sanchez, and, well, actually, good afternoon now, Chair Sanchez and members of the committee. My name is Phil Montori. I'm the Testing and Balancing and Fire Life Safety Instructor at the Sheet Metal Workers Local 28 Training Center in New York City, and I'm here to speak in full support of Intro 88. Today, I want to talk to you about something that might not be on the top of our minds every day, but it plays a crucial role in keeping us safe: stairwell pressurization, smoke purge systems, and fire-smoke dampers, especially when it comes to fire life safety. Imagine you're in a building during a fire emergency, flames and smokes are spreading, and you need to get out quickly. Stairwell pressurization and smoke purge systems are like the unsung heroes in this situation. They work quietly in the background to ensure that stairwells, the escape routes we often take for granted, remain safe and accessible. Stairwell pressurization is like a shield. It helps to keep smoke from entering the stairwell, creating a safe passage for building occupants to exit, and a safe path for first responders to enter. You can think of it as a protective barrier that ensures the stairwell remains a clear and breathable space, allowing people to escape a building even when there's smoke everywhere else. Regular maintenance and checkups for these systems are important. Just like your car needs regular service to run smoothly, these systems need attention, too. Imagine relying on your car in an emergency, only to find out it won't start because it hasn't been maintained. The same goes for the safety systems. Regular maintenance ensures that stairwell pressurization and smoke purge systems are ready to perform when we need them the most. A trained certified technician would visually check for any faults, replace broken parts, and make sure everything is working as it should. It's a bit like a health check for the safety infrastructure of a building. At the Local 28 Training Center, we train and certify technicians to identify and fix issues in fire-smoke dampers and stairwell pressurizations using our mockup. If these systems aren't properly maintained, they might not function correctly during an emergency. Smoke could infiltrate the stairwells, making it difficult for people to evacuate safely. We want to avoid a situation where the very systems designed to protect people become unreliable. In conclusion, stairwell pressurization and smoke purge systems are our silent guardians during a fire emergency, ensuring that our escape routes remain clear and safe. But for them to be effective, we must prioritize the maintenance. By passing Intro 88, it's a small investment in ensuring that when the time comes, these systems are ready to serve their crucial role in preserving life safety. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you so much. I really appreciate that analogy of the unsung heroes and the silent guardians. Also, love that shirt. So, committee, as long as it's underfit. Just kidding. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next panel is going to be on Zoom, so please accept the prompt when you are told to unmute. We will start with Jeff Parks, followed by Adam Roberts.
Hi. Thank you, everybody. Chair Sanchez and members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to provide my testimony on Intro 88. My name is Jeff Parks, and I work for the Sheet Metal and Air Conditioning Contractors National Association, or SHMAGNA. And we are an international trade association representing 3,500 signatory contracting firms across the country and internationally. I've been in the sheet metal HVAC industry for nearly 30 years. And currently, in my role at SHMAGNA, you know, it includes providing training on proper installation of fire life safety dampers. But I was also a former Maryland HVAC contractor that employed certified fire and smoke damper technicians who performed damper acceptance and inspection testing on many buildings throughout Maryland, Virginia, and the District of Columbia. So I can attest firsthand to the pervasive issues with the fire life safety dampers, as documented in the 2021 University of Maryland Reliability Study, in which Chris from NEME noted some of the statistics. On many occasions, dampers were installed incorrectly. They had no or limited access, broken fusible links, debris blocking the damper blade function, broken damper shafts, inoperable actuators. The list goes on and on. And many times, these noted deficiencies resulted in the need for the dampers to be repaired or completely replaced. So had those dampers I just described remained unchecked and in service during a fire life safety event, it could have been catastrophic to not only the safety of the occupants, but also the first responders responding to the event. As I previously stated, I'm in full support of this, and I believe it'll make the building safer for the occupants and help prevent future tragedies. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, we'll hear from Adam Roberts, followed by Eli Howard.
Starting time.
Thank you for holding this hearing today. I am Adam Roberts, Policy Director for the Community Housing Improvement Program, also known as CHIP. We represent New York's housing providers, including apartment building owners and managers. Two years after the Twin Parks tragedy, the danger from fire in residential buildings has not abated. The risks posed by e-bikes and their batteries have caused a threat of fires to grow. We thank the council for its work in addressing this issue. Our remorse needed to ensure tenants and building workers are safe. The council's recent laws have focused on preventing the sale of unsafe batteries and bikes and ensuring bike operators are aware of safe practices. The council must also look for ways to allow for removal of unsafe batteries and correcting unsafe conditions, such as illegal repair shops and charging stations in residential buildings. Currently, there is little to no cooperation between housing providers and the enforcement agencies. This is partly because a housing provider who reports an unsafe condition to NYPD, FDNY, and DEP will face violations and fines simply because the tenant was creating an unsafe condition. Housing providers, whether they be owners, managers, or building workers, do not have legal authority to enter apartments and remove illegal batteries. Housing providers must go through the courts before being able to do so, which can take months, if not years. By putting the onus on housing providers to enforce the law, it allows unsafe practices, unsafe batteries, and storage conditions to persist, rather than encouraging cooperation between NYPD, FDNY, DEP, and housing providers. While the council has taken measures to reduce the fire risk from e-bikes, we have serious concerns about Intro 17 2024, which would mandate the installation of electric vehicle charging stations. Due to the financial stress this would impose on rent-stabilized housing, the installation of EV chargers requires significant structural upgrades, which can be prohibitively expensive. The bill does account for this by exempting some types of affordable housing, but is only exempting buildings that have regulatory agreements with government agencies.
Time's expired. Thank you.
These regulatory agreements involve an influx of government funding to maintain buildings. This is a problem since most rent-stabilized buildings do not have the benefit of receiving government subsidies. As currently written, this bill exempts the best-funded affordable housing, instead of the housing that is struggling the most, like rent-stabilized housing. We ask that the council correct this to ensure the housing with the greatest financial need is the one receiving exemptions. Again, thank you for holding this hearing today.
Thank you so much, Adam.
Next, we'll hear from Eli Howard. Eli Howard, if you're on Zoom, please accept the, please begin. You're unmuted.
Starting time.
Okay. Next, on Zoom, if you are on Zoom, Alinda Ortiz or Jessica Belinder. Okay, we will move back to our folks who have registered to testify in person. Please come up to the table, Raul Rivera and Christopher Leon Johnson.
Ready? Ready? Hello, my name is Christopher Leon Johnson. On the record, I used to be a member of 32BJ as a shop store for the NTA Eastside Access Project from 2017 to 2021. All right, so I will say this right now. Where is 32BJ on this? Like, I don't see not one representative of 32BJ advocating for Intro 88 in the city council. Now, where's Dennis Johnston of 32BJ? Where's Izzy Melendez of 32BJ? Where are those two at? I don't see them at all. They didn't even testify. That is not right. As a union leaders, so-called leaders of the security division, they should have been here advocating for the protection of their workers. Not only those two, Manny Pastorach of 32BJ should have been out here too advocating for the safety of their workers, because as much as these members of the sheet metal workers and the carpenters and the other vendors, as you spoke prior to me and myself, the security guards work at those places, too. They deserve the same protections as the construction workers. We understand that the construction workers, they have a lot of political power, more than the security workers at 32BJ, but at the end of the day, we're all human beings. Security guards are all human beings. They deserve the same protections as the construction workers. They deserve the same respect as the construction workers. Now, going to that, they deserve, security guards that need the same pay, not say the same pay, but they need the same pay level as the union carpenters. And the union members like sheet metal workers, they get paid $60, $80, $100, and some guy get paid $200, $50 an hour, and that's great. They deserve that amount of money for busting their butts. But why are security guards that work construction sites getting paid $16 an hour, $17 an hour, $18 an hour, with majority of time, non-union, even the union guards that work on those sites get treated like garbage by the companies that are hired to do the security supplying? Now, I'll say this right now about Intro 88, about the smoke tampering, with the smoke machine. I used to have, I used to have one of those cars. I think it was the S80, the S6, S89, something like that. I've got the exact number. I used to have that. But I will say this right now. You have to put that law with the fire department to use it for every year, instead of every, what is it, every three years? Three years. Instead of every three years, you need to adjust it to make it for every one year, because the problem is there's certain sites with security guards, and I'm not talking about the construction workers, I'm not a construction worker, that they get the card, they just get it just to get the job, and they don't know anything about smoke machines or smoke detectors, anything like that. And if something happens, it all falls on the property management company. It never falls on the security guards. Now, what need to start happening, Mrs. Sanchez, with the help of the Labor Committee, Mrs. Camarita Rosa, because she oversees the unions, you need to find a way to get the unions and certain security companies out here and question about, like, what are they doing with the protection of overseeing security guards and staying compliant with the fire department, fire department compliance and security guards. And I'll say this again, I'll say it one more time. These companies have to be held responsible. These security companies need to be held responsible, just as, say, if the construction workers, they mess up, the company can be held responsible, even held, even get arrested, just like this guy who got arrested in Westchester for the death of their workers. Now, security companies need to have that same responsibility, just as the construction companies. And I'll say this right now, with come to fire, fire control, the security companies, the unions like 32BJ need to be held liable, too, because they're the main ones that advocate you guys on how the game go with security companies and security agencies. So the company, like 32BJ, need to be held responsible. 32BJ need to start advocating for proper pay for the security guards on construction sites. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me? Good afternoon. My name is Raul Rivera. I'm a TLC driver and a TLC driver advocate. I'm a proud taxi driver in the city with over 23,000 trips. I'm the founder of NYC Drivers Unite. We have a petition to reform the TLC, and soon we'll go to court to sue them. I want to share a quote before I forget it. "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." Martin Luther King. I want to share another quote. "Humans first, technology second, today, tomorrow, forever." I want to mention security. I want to talk about, I am doing security. There's a lot of issues in the security division when it comes to 32BJ. There was, I was working at FIT, the school on 27 and 7. There was a suicide that happened there because of poor security. We've been striking since last year. We had three strikes. We tried to reach out to President Brown of the school. We tried to reach out to the deputy directors. They basically had me removed from the site. There's a lot of issues happening around safety, FIT, and we're striking against FIT to have these two public safety directors removed, Mario Cabrera and Ishmael Kuanunu. And we tried to speak with Israel Melendez. He's the vice president to 32BJ Security Division, and he refused to listen to us. He doesn't stand with his 32BJ security members. So on March 13, we're going to have a big, big strike for the first time ever in front of 32BJ. Safety is important for us. We're underpaid. We are licensed. We are vetted. And this has to do, this has to do with fire safety. A lot of us are fire officers that we watch staircases. We're put in places where a building was already burnt down, and we have to be there present. You need a fire watch guard there 24/7 when there's a fire, these fires that happen throughout the city. And so we're striking for the drive, I mean, excuse me, for the security officers. They're getting paid $16 They're getting paid $16.70 an hour, and we are licensed. We're vetted. We're fighting for dignity and respect, and we ask for the removal of these two public safety directors, and we thank you for the time.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Raul, and thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Enjoy that.
There was a suicide. There was a suicide because the school was open 24 hours. The guy just ran to the building, went to the roof, and he jumped. That's poor security. Poor security.
Thank you. Lyric Thompson? This concludes the public testimony. If we have inadvertently forgotten to call on someone to testify, if that person could raise their hand using the Zoom raise function or can present themselves in person, please do so now. Hearing nothing? I'll pass it to you, Chair.
Thank you so much to members of the administration, members of the public, and everyone who tuned in for this important hearing. I appreciate your time, and we'll improve from here. Thank you so much. This hearing is adjourned.